Order at 6:30, please.
I see a Commissioner arriving right now. Yep. Yes, Mr. Pegg has just arrived. Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 13, 2025, meeting of the City of Westminster Planning Commission. Can we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Kinnear.
Here.
Vice Chair Carpenter.
Present.
Commissioner Bossert.
Here.
Commissioner Colling.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Tomacek.
Here.
Commissioner Mayo.
Excused.
Commissioner Zhang.
Excused. If you could say it loud, he might hear you.
Commissioner Pegg, attendance? Thank you.
All right. We have a full commission tonight, although I don't know that it's that important because we won't be voting on anything. But I want to apologize in advance for the noise that's in the building right now. The HVA system has gone down, and it's being worked on as we speak, so please excuse that. Tonight's workshop is a little different than the typical Planning Commission meeting. Instead of considering land use cases and holding public hearings, tonight's meeting will be an informal workshop to receive a presentation and share the proposed United, or excuse me, Unified Development Code, code, the UDC, which will build on the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, Housing Needs Assessment and Sustainability Plan and Transportation and Mobility Plan, with technology and regulatory provisions for new land development within Westminster. Tonight's topic is zoning districts and uses. If time allows, comments from the audience will be allowed after the Commissioner has had a chance to engage in a discussion with the staff. Okay, is it you, Andrew? Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thanks for letting us be here tonight and scheduling this kind of different format for you. But we would like to talk about our Unified Development Code project over the next several months. We'd like to share things we're looking at with you, and we'd like to hear from you on some of your reactions or concerns, as well as the public. And based on the emails we got, I thought there'd be more people in the room, but maybe zoning wasn't that interesting. But I'm delighted to see Rich and Karen here because I know they'll have some good thoughts to share with us, so we'll look forward to that. And I will let our outside presenter, who will be presenting together, Elizabeth Garvin from Clarion. You want to say anything?
Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Short and sweet.
Good evening, Commissioners, I'm Elizabeth Garvin. I am Director at Clarion Associates in Denver, and I've had the privilege of working with Andrew and John and the planning staff for the past couple of years. I'm trying to get this code in a place that is really reflective of Westminster. And we're pleased to start this process with you and looking forward to hearing your feedback and comments. Thank you.
So introductions check. What we'd like to do, if it's all right with the Commission, is do a little presentation, talk about, I know it's a little bit confusing even among our city staff, I get confusing sometimes, but just talk about what the project is, the timeline, things we're looking at, and then kind of the zoning focus of tonight. And then we'll focus on some other things in the upcoming meetings, which we'll talk about. And then we actually have a little questionnaire document that we'd like to, for you all to complete, as well as the audience. It's on the back table. And then some time to share your thoughts, our public can share thoughts. And then try to close out of here around 8 o'clock because we only reserved the facility and security for so long. So with that, I'll go on and get started. The UDC, and I just say UDC, I don't say Unified Development Code because it's a mouthful. But the Unified Development Code, it's really a technical document. It's not a public policy document. The City Council has created policies for the city through our Comprehensive Plan, Sustainability Plan, Transportation Plan, Water Fiscancy Plan, the PRL Plan, which is actually the most recent one on the list, Housing Needs Assessment, the Redevelopment Adaptive Reuse Toolkit. So these things have set various policies, some of these the Commission's seen, some of you haven't. We need to take that step now of taking the broad policy language and actually making it more technical code language through zoning and use regulations, subdivision standards, provisions for site and building design, site design standards, and then how we administer the code. Who are the decision-making bodies, such as the Planning Commission, the City Council, those kind of things? That's our goal, as I mentioned in the pre-meeting. But for the benefit of Commissioner Pegg, you know, the last time the city did anything of this scale was finished in 1997. And those are more or less the regulations we've been using since then. So it's really time, or maybe even past time, to revisit these things, really think about how much the city's changed in the 30 years. It's no longer a greenfield community doing giant master-planned communities. The uplands development is probably the last large-scale residential development that the city will have. We're really moving into more of an infill and redevelopment type of paradigm for what's left of our city and therefore, you know, right sizing our requirements to make sure it's responsive to that situation. So we had to sort of reset this process. The Commission may, some of you may recall, we had a few discussions on the UDC a few years back. That was based on our prior comp plan that was tracking along when Council did not adopt the proposed Comprehensive Plan in 2021 and chose a new direction that, of course, if the UDC is implementing the comp plan, well, it means that the UDC basically had to, you know, get the reset button pressed and making sure we're in alignment there, as well as taking into account the other plans that have been done since then. So we kind of refined the scope. I actually feel a lot better about it than when we were here a few years ago. It's not, we're not going in a direction that's going to be like a complete overhaul of our system. It's going to be a little more surgical, thinking about keeping what works, changing what doesn't make sense anymore, and just being a little bit more thoughtful and not a sweeping changes. So we're having these public workshops, we'll continue these over the next few months. And then based on how well these go or not, you know, additional opportunities for public comment. Put that together in more of a public draft of the overall UDC, which I'll warn you now is going to be a big document. And then putting that out for an additional round of public review where people can actually read the document and let us know their thoughts on it. And then getting that polished up and then looking at getting it adopted hopefully by the end of the year. We have our existing Westminster Missile Code. You probably see references to WMC when we give you agenda memos or PowerPoints. This part of our code, Title 11, it's divided into a series of titles, and I want to say there's, I don't know, 16, 17 of them altogether. Title 11 is the one we primarily work with. It has a lot of things for a lot of different purposes. Our work is really focused on those places that I've highlighted with the orange text. So it's how we do planning and our growth management system, zoning, development standards, or development procedures, rather, our development standards. There's a lot of parts of the code that we will not be touching through this. The building codes were updated in 2024. The sign codes are relatively recent and those other things. So again, we're trying to be a little bit more surgical with this project now. And that's the first input into the Unified Development Code. The second input is we have various design standards, design guidelines, landscape regs. These all live in separate places. So sometimes you have to navigate multiple documents, and that's kind of one of the things we'd like to get away from is having a Unified Development Code where everything is in a one-stop shop and remove some of the guesswork, increase the transparency. I'm not going to talk about the Comprehensive Plan other than on one slide because we've talked about the Comprehensive Plan a lot. But one thing that's in the Comprehensive Plan that I just wanted to touch on because it informs the code. When we were revisiting the Comprehensive Plan with the change in direction a few years ago, you know, the question was posed to staff, and I thought it was a good question, since we're really focusing on these few remaining lands in our community. It's about 2% of our city's land area, less than 500 acres. You know, the question was, we were challenged with, well, what's missing? You know, we have a lot of good stuff, there's a high-quality life here, but what are those pieces that are missing from those different parts of town? So the Comprehensive Plan has this neighborhood unit concept that talks about, you know, what are the ingredients for a good neighborhood centered on a park or civic space, and then looking at what's available within a short walking distance. You know, these are primarily, like, the city is primarily lower-density housing. But around the edges or where there's transportation, transit facilities, you could have higher densities or a mix of uses. And then looking at, you know, making sure we have a street system that facilitates walking and biking and that kind of thing. And so those general concepts are going to go into some of the thinking for the Unified Development Code. Just to hit this point again, again, there are master plans, there's our Comprehensive Plan, Sustainability Plan, other things, you know. And then there's the code, which is very technical. So a master plan is like, we need storage, and we want these different types of storage. And the code is like, here's how you put together the storage. We sometimes use this just to help people understand that difference. So again, the Unified Development Code, when it's done, will have various standards and regulations for development. It is a citywide document. It's not specific to any one part of town, that was a question that came up at one point. We are looking at our procedures and making sure they provide equitable access through our government. The UDC is not retroactive, and I think Elizabeth has a slide later on that talks a little bit more about that. But creating a new code doesn't make anyone have to change anything they're doing now. It's proactive for when staff does receive applications to develop land. And I would also note that with our downtown and Westminster Station-specific plans, those would live on. This would not supersede any of the standards that are in those. There's a few areas where those are silent on a particular issue, then you fall back on standard city code, and that's when the Unified Development Code might come into play. As I mentioned a minute ago, it's only about 2% of the city that is actual vacant land. It's about 475 acres, as you can see here. Some of these already have development cases working on them. Obviously, the big square that is the uplands is a standout, but there's other ones. So that inventory of land is really shrinking. And these are the types of sites we're thinking about with these updated regulations. And then the other thing I would note, the UDC may, we can put in provisions and we may allow things. That does not mean someone actually builds it. We've been challenged several times, we want to see tiny homes. Well, we can allow tiny homes, but this doesn't actually make someone go build them. That's going to be a choice of a property owner and a developer and what lenders will finance and so forth. There's a lot of things that we at the city can't control, but we can obviously create the provisions that would allow that development format. I think here is where I turn it over to Elizabeth.
Thank you.
So this is great.
Okay, all right.
And I can either run these and you can say next slide, or I can let you do it.
If you want to run it, that'd be great. So we have two big topics tonight, the updated zoning districts and the updated use table. Westminster does a lot of development through planned unit development process, which means you may not spend as much time in the details of what a base zoning district does. Just, you know, if my property is zoned Q and Q allows me to have houses and ponies, and I want to do something completely different, I'm going to do a PUD, and that's going to take me away from Q altogether because I want hotels and unicorns instead. So we've kind of separated, I say I do unicorns lately, I need to move on to another animal, maybe I'll do pandas. But we want to make sure that the city is in place of having base zoning districts as you look to redevelopment down the road. And it's, you know, possible that the base districts will work for the 2% of the property that Andrew was talking about. PUD will still be an option for everybody, that's not going away. But as cities see redevelopment over time, and that's kind of, you know, you're moving from zoning 1.0 to zoning 2.0 now. Redevelopment is kind of a different thing, different animal. We want to make sure that the basics are in place for property owners to use and for the city to use. So in updating the city's existing zoning districts, we have kind of four things that we're looking at. And so the first one is aligning with and implementing the Westminster Comprehensive Plan. I'm sure you all have talked about this multiple times. The Comprehensive Plan is a policy and regulatory document in Westminster, and that may be a little different than some of the neighboring communities. Not everybody uses their plan that way. It's neither right nor wrong, but we need to make sure that because Westminster has chosen to do that, the code works with that, and it really kind of fits hand in glove with those aspects of the comp plan that are regulatory. So secondly, we wanted to create those base districts for future PUDs or PDP/ODP amendments. The base districts can create a set of standards to start a discussion with. We are working on updating the dimensional standards to focus on housing and encourage new development types. That's one of the reasons you want to update a code every 20, 30 years. They do become classic over time, and they become really interesting, but they also lock in development patterns that we don't see anymore. And so we want to make sure that we're stretching the code to allow new housing types and housing patterns that maybe the city wants to see over time. The existing zoning districts are a little challenging to use, and so making some changes will help put that focus in place. And then finally, and the city's been working on redevelopment and adaptive reuse toolkit. And so this is looking at, you know, do we have some commercial structures? Some commercial structures where residential may be appropriate within that structure over time, redevelopment? Is there development on the ground that may work with some tweaking and not necessarily tear down or scrape off? And so in that place, we want to make sure the regulations say, okay, here are the steps that we're all going to walk through together to get from one type of development to adaptive reuse, another type of development. So those are our big topics. Go ahead, let's move on. So some key changes that you'll see when the draft comes out. So we've consolidated a number of the residential districts. The zoning districts will work on a one-to-one relationship with the place types, the character types in the Comprehensive Plan. So it'll be plan says this, zoning district does this, plan says this, zoning district does this. And so we thought that would be the most effective way to make sure that we're getting the plan implemented. You'll see three scales of mixed-use districts. And so this is a neighborhood scale and a slightly larger kind of just regular commercial scale. Wow, that was very non-professional jargon there. What could I use in there? That is multiple neighborhood serving, and then there's regional mixed-use. So we wanted to clarify that within the code because that aligns with the plan. And also, it helps neighbors set expectations properly if there's going to be redevelopment. We want to know, we all want to know what's going to happen. And it helps applicants understand what the city's looking for there. And then finally, I touched on this on the last slide, achievable dimensions for the base zoning districts to get to some of that missing middle housing that the city might want to see over time.
Can I, excuse me, can I interrupt for just a second?
Sure.
The table you had on the previous slide is the current zoning, or it's what you're hoping to get to?
This is what we'll be getting to.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. The current zoning may be a challenge if somebody wants to try to use it to get to housing. So we're making changes to make that easier. And then finally, also looking at some alternatives to PUD that meet city development expectations. So somebody could come in without going planned development. As Andrew said, these changes don't trigger the day the city adopts the code. Someone has to do something to make the code apply. Everyone asking for it will still be able to bring a PUD through the process, and they can still use the PUD process to modify the standards of existing PUDs. So it doesn't wipe out what's been approved previously, that stays in place. Let's do the next one. So just to let you know what the districts look like, so on the left is the district that you'll see in the new UDC regulations. And on the right are the existing districts that may just be a one-for-one change or may have been consolidated. And the big consolidation that you'll see in the residential districts are the one-family residential, RA, one-family residential, R1, two-family residential, R2, and mobile home district, R5, are all combined into a suburban residential district. And so, you know, you can see that that district will have the single-family and the two-family allowed in it. It can get to more of a mix of housing types in there and housing opportunities. Keeping the multifamily, R3, and bringing it forward, and the multifamily, R4, and bringing that forward. Encouraging people, if they are doing non-PUD development, to mix the residential structure, residential types. So it doesn't all necessarily have to be single-family or all duplex. It could be some townhomes, it could be some paired homes. We see that those developments are appealing to people in offering a range of prices for housing and a range of living styles. So that'll be something that can happen in the city. And then there's a mixed higher-density residential district that'll be new. Let's do the next one. So then we move into the set of mixed-use and commercial zoning districts. So as it says, mixed-use is residential plus something else, usually residential plus commercial, could be office also. So we're carrying forward some existing districts and then adding a couple new ones here. The mixed-use neighborhood is a new district, and that is if you're looking for that neighborhood center, maybe, you know, walkable from your house, might have, you know, haircutting place, might have dry cleaners, could have a liquor store, something along those lines. So that would be that neighborhood scale. And then the commercial mixed-use, so that's definitely going to be at a larger scale. That might be more drive-to, places that we want to get to. But we could also see some residential mixed in with that. That might be some larger apartments, might be some townhomes, something along those lines. So, sorry, Andrew's taking a note, I apologize for that. Then we have a grouping of three groups of districts here. So you can see at the top, we have the employment districts, and these are places where people work. Then we have the open and ag district. We still do have an open district that's being carried forward. And then we have two special-purpose districts, and that's the specific plan district. So it aligns with a specific plan and the planned unit development. Backing up to employment, you'll see we did a couple consolidations here. This is where we're really hitting what Andrew was pointing out, the aging of the code. We don't need the distinctions to be this fine anymore. We allow a larger range of uses in the employment flex and don't have to, you know, cordon off the transitional and the heavy commercial. We do buffer still districts from other non-similar districts. But, you know, we've realized over time where we were leaning into zoning codes that had like one teeny-tiny district for everything, we don't need to do that, we're backing up and making it broader. And that gives the city more opportunities to allow good uses in there. So that's, those are going to be the changes along there, so let's go to the next slide. So how will the new districts apply? This will be a question that everybody hears. Certainly, you know, when you're a property owner in a community that is changing the zoning, you want to know first and foremost, how does it apply to me? It's your property. But then we have bigger questions about how does it apply overall. So we want to point out there'll be no changes to existing approved PUDs, downtown Westminster or Westminster Station. So you can see a clip from the zoning map here, a lot of property within the city is zoned PUD. So you're not going to see change. If you go to the zoning map on the city's website, anybody in the audience wants to do that, you'll see that these developments, which have been negotiated, will stay the way they are. Then we'll do a conversion. Then we'll do a conversion. Most likely, say, the existing non-PUD zoning, the 2% of the property, will be matched up to the most similar new zoning districts. So we'll just convert zoning district names to get to the new districts. And then, you know, existing residents and businesses really aren't required to do anything zoning-wise unless they start requesting major changes to their structure or their property, in which case they're in front of planning commission and city council, just as they would be in other development situations. You have thought about that? No, we're good? Okay, keep going. So then we move to the use table. So districts are really about structures and dimensions. Use table is about the types of uses, the actual uses on the property. So some key changes here. We are consolidating the use table, consolidating uses in the same way that we don't do long laundry lists of structures and districts anymore. We've also moved away from laundry lists of uses. We don't have to say everything, but we do categorize uses. So we'll say, you know, you can have heavy commercial here, or you can have, you know, residential here. And so then we update to reflect modern business categories. So we may take out, you know, something that is outdated. I know a code is old if I bump into orphanages. It was probably drafted in the 50s or 60s if I'm seeing that or earlier, and so we'll pull all of that out.
Yeah, if I may, yeah, this afternoon I was thinking about this question because it's interesting if you look at our zoning table, at some uses that are in there that I'm sure served a purpose at one point, but maybe not as much anymore. Video sales and rental. Who here's gone to Blockbuster lately? Typewriter sales. Sand and gravel extraction, which I'm sure happens somewhere, but I don't think we have that in Westminster. So it's kind of out of date, but then we go looking for a use for someone who's actually at our counter trying to do something, like a microbrewery. It's not in there. The Comprehensive Plan has this big employment focus. We don't have provisions for research and development facilities or co-working or those kind of things. So it just hasn't kept up with the times, just making a point there.
Yeah, no, that's, I mean, that's an important thing. So along those lines, we have increased the labeling or the number of housing types for clarity and to encourage housing diversity. Sometimes we use the code for its educational purposes, and over time, many codes, many codes along the front range have come to say you can do single-family detached, you can do duplexes, and you can do multifamily. What they meant in there was you can do a variety of things that could include a triplex or a fourplex, or it could be, you know, stacked duplexes. It could be a variety of things. We ended up at three, and that we only started seeing three built. So we want to say, hey, there are a variety of choices. Go ahead and think about some of these other things that we might want to see. And then finally, there are some uses in the comprehensive plan that are potentially prohibited, and so we wanted to take the use table and identify those uses for extra review so they don't just slide through without somebody saying, oh, wait, the plan said no on that. So that updates to the use table help keep it a functional tool within the code. Let's go on to the next one. So it's not going to look a ton different, but it's going to function differently. So we've got those modern uses. The version that you're looking at here came out of the draft that we're working on with staff and that we're getting to a polished enough point to start sharing with everybody. It is a little frustrating if we put the code out before it's kind of reached critical mass because you're still going to see things that change, and we want to get past that point. But you can see from looking at this table, so we have the permitted uses with the letter P. On some of them, we have a little asterisk symbol. That means it is a secondary use according to the plan. So you got to go check the plan to see if that use is allowed, if you've met the qualifications for secondary use. On the far right, we have a column for use-specific standards. So this tells an applicant, hey, you need to go look at this other section because we have some additional rules that go with this. And then we have incorporated the city's design standards. Andrew pointed that out earlier. So the mixed-use standards, the senior housing standards, those will all be included in the code, and those will be applicable to structures and uses also, so that process won't be going away. And so then with, with not many, let's say with a handful of uses, you're going to see that there are use-specific standards. And so the example that we've put in here are ADUs. So here's a picture of ADUs. It's not really telling you about the use-specific standards, but you guys went through the process of adopting the city's standards for ADUs. So those will roll into the regulations, and when someone wants to develop an ADU, that table will tell you, you have to go to these use-specific standards, and you have to meet those standards also. We will be incorporating the city's recently adopted standards for ADUs, family care homes, group homes, outdoor dining, and solar energy systems. And anything else you guys send through over the next couple months will end up incorporating into the code. So that's kind of what that is. If anything needed to be updated again and modernized, that's been part of our process here. I think the last thing that we still need to modernize are the big satellite dishes. That's the one set of standards that's still in there that may need a new home, may need a quiet retirement. We're working that out. Yeah, yeah. So let's go to the last one. So that's the overview, and it's just kind of intended to ground everybody in the place where we are in making these changes. We've got a few more overview workshops coming up with you. So in a month, we'll come talk about the development standards. So these are standards that apply across all the zoning districts, and they're topic area standards. So we have regulations for site and structures. That is where our design standards are going into the code. We have updated landscaping regulations. We've had really interesting conversations about updating parking regulations that you'll see, outdoor lighting, and parks in open space. We'll come back in July to talk about development procedures, and we're holding August if we need to, depending on kind of where we are in the conversation. And we anticipate that the draft will be out by that point in time, definitely. So we'll just stay in touch with you to see what your preferences are about where we are in the process. Right now, staff and the consultant team are working on editing the UDC. We've got the draft at about 60, 70%, and staff has proceeded to do some testing against projects that have come through and have been approved by the city to see what would happen if those projects came through under the new code. And that's been really beneficial to the process. So then as soon as the draft is ready, we'll share the full version for community review and comment. Literally, we will have the version up on the website so people can review it and comment on it. We'll also be doing some outreach activities and events to help people understand how to make sense of a regulatory document like this. And then we'll do the public hearings and adoption later this year, so we'll put dates up on the city's website as we get closer to that, but that'll still be a few months out. I don't know if you want to add anything to this or refine it.
Yeah, no. It's better if it's on, isn't it? Yeah, I think that sums it up well. We'll be back here a few more times and more if needed, trying to, again, trying to bring this to you in sort of pieces that are digestible because otherwise it's kind of a lot to take in at once. We do hope to get this done this year. We're tracking along that way, provided there's no crazy things beyond our control that happen, but that's where we're going. We did have a questionnaire that you, the commissioners all have copies of. There were copies for the public, and I do want to invite everyone to do that and then share your thoughts. But I guess before we do that, specifically for the commissioners here tonight, do you have clarifying questions on the presentation before we go to the questionnaire?
I have a quick question on Slide 18. You've got manufactured homes, and it looks like it's not permitted, or what's the message there?
And we don't have that completely figured out. We've had internal debates about that. What it says is manufactured home park PUD required, meaning you would have to do PUD rather than fitting into a base zone. We don't, given our land inventory, not to mention the economics of land in this market, I don't know that we would anticipate a lot of new manufactured home parks. We do have two in the city. One of them is already PUD, and of course, they can continue being the PUD that they are. We do have one that is a conventional zoning district, and we are kind of having debates about, well, what do we, how do we administer that over time? If they just become non-conforming, it could create challenges for the people who are there. On the other hand, if we anticipate that property redeveloping in the future, would a PUD be a good way to, you know, kick that off? I don't know that we have that fully settled yet. If you all have thoughts on that, you know, we're certainly happy to listen to that.
Well, and kind of associated with that, a lot of homes now are being 3D printed. Is that considered manufactured homes, or would that be just standard?
This is actually for the park. So there's a series of houses on one large property. Building construction stuff, the types of construction really start getting out of, actually out of the UDC and into the building code and international residential code at that point.
Okay. My only other comment would be manufactured homes are usually more affordable.
That's right.
So we would want to keep that as an option.
Absolutely. Absolutely. We acknowledge that, yeah. That's why we're, we actually haven't sort of predefined a course yet. We're still kind of debating that.
And perhaps adding to that, most tiny homes are actually mobile.
Yeah.
So if you're saying manufactured homes have to have a special PUD and all that, you're sort of defeating the purpose of even having a tiny home section elsewhere in the code.
Right, yeah. No, we're definitely thinking about these things, yeah.
Okay.
Two questions. One relates to this process, and will the commission have access to the full document at the same time as the public or before the public?
We would anticipate when that draft is out, yeah. It would be widely shared with the public, with the commission, with anyone really, and then we have some ideas that we're working on, but, you know, additional opportunities for public input for us to review before we would come back to the commission with an updated draft saying, you know, we did these things, we're from the public, these things, this is our recommendation to you, commission, and then you can share with us, you know, if you think it's good, or you think it's good, but you want to see these things happen like you did with the comp plan, you know, that we look forward to that once it's more baked.
And the second question is whether there's a process in place to address any state statutory changes that might impact planning.
Sure.
If there's a quick fix to comply with the state statute.
Sure. There's other conversations going on with the city council, but the, I'm going to press the easy button on this one. The timeline that this UDC is on is ahead of the deadlines for some of the things that are coming down through legislation they put in place last year, let alone what they're doing this year. Some of the hard deadlines are in 2026 and 2027, so we will continue our conversations with city council on what gets integrated and whatnot, but we're just trying to get the book ready at this point.
Okay. I'm going to be traffic cop here, and I'm going to call on Commissioner Carpenter next.
Yep. Question and a statement, I guess, as far as, well, maybe the statement's first. My concern is about the traditional zone districts are, I'm sure you're aware, traditionally in historic Westminster, and most everything else is PUD around the city, short of the open space and parks. By trying to shoehorn these existing zoning districts into new zoning districts, and having illegally non-conforming buildings, I'm, you know, have you considered the impacts of that? Because I appreciate that you're saying, well, only for redevelopment, but we, you and I both know that's not how that actually works. Someone goes to, you know, do anything to their property, you know, that maybe they want to, you know, add a patio or add a deck that would require a permit, then all of a sudden, they're out of conformance with the new zoning, and that really puts a burden on, you know, on residents, or maybe businesses too. I think, how are we considering this? Because I think this is opening a huge can of worms.
No, I get that, and, you know, I was a zoning administrator in another city, a large city. I definitely get that. If you looked at our dimensional standards today, our base zonings are not workable even on existing properties in historic Westminster. Pretty much everyone is non-conforming, even if we do nothing right now. So in fact, this commission sees it. When stuff happens in historic Westminster, it's usually a companion with a rezoning to PUD because the existing zoning is not workable. So I'd actually kind of come in the other direction. We'd like to make the existing zonings workable, like not have a 100-foot setback if you only have a 50-foot wide lot, relaxing parking requirements, lightening up on the landscaping, that kind of thing. So we, our hope is to make it work for people. And Elizabeth has the extra experience. She was actually also a consultant on the redevelopment and adaptive reuse toolkit, which they interviewed people in historic Westminster and identified a lot of challenges. Then we have brought that in to our scope of work to try to address those.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Tomacek.
Actually, I think Tim was first.
Was it Tim first? Okay, Tim.
So could you go back to that slide that shows the traditional zoning districts versus the PUD?
This one?
No, no, the map.
Oh, right. Where was that?
That was what?
There we go.
Yeah.
Okay, so sure enough, those are all in southwestminster, it looks like. So what I'm hearing is that the table on Slide 18 really would only apply to these few districts. Is that true?
Yes and no. When someone comes in to create a PUD, we have to start somewhere. So the idea is we have the Comprehensive Plan and the different land uses. You would then turn to the zoning district associated with it because we're going to have like-for-like zoning, Comprehensive Plan, and then through the BUD process, you could take the district we create in the UDC, and then you could modify it. It's just expanding kind of this current system we do right now. If you come in for PUD, you have to figure out basically five different development types and fit in the box. So this is going to be a more expansive menu.
But what I'm getting at is those PUDs you showed, those all exist now.
Yeah.
So like, we've got dwelling duplex here. If somebody wanted to build a duplex, let's say, they'd have to be in a traditionally zoned district to do that by right. Otherwise, if they're in a PUD, they need perhaps a zoning change or something more intense, it sounds like.
Yeah, I hear the question. I understand the question, no, sorry about that, Commissioner. It's close to the latter with a nuance. It would be a PUD amendment.
A PUD amendment.
An existing PUD, then either, depending on where the regulation lives, it's either a PDP or an ODP amendment. Some of those are approved administratively among staff, others we bring to the commission and city council. It depends on the scale, really, of their amendment.
Okay. Cool. Thank you.
Commissioner Tomacek.
So a lot of what you've presented tonight and things that we've seen in the past seem to focus a lot on getting more homes into the jurisdiction or into the city. But the primary concerns that are expressed by folks who come to the meetings here is that we already have enough people, we have enough density, and they're worried about higher density bumping up against the existing housing developments. It seems as if you're just pushing harder against all those concerns with what's being proposed, at least conceptually and a lot of what's here. I understand that the world needs more housing, but at least on its surface, pardon my colorful way of putting this, it sounds like you're kind of giving a big middle finger to a lot of people who have expressed those concerns. of people who have expressed those concerns. I would suggest, at least thinking that through, that at least in the presentation, it's going to get a lot of pushback from the general public.
And maybe we had poor choices for our examples. I think some of us had sensed there was an interest in housing, and so that's kind of been our focus. The comprehensive plan establishes the land uses and the densities. We're not changing the comprehensive plan. We're trying to write technical code language that implements the comprehensive plan city council adopted two years ago and updated two weeks ago. That's why we're here.
Okay. And to perhaps in the updates and capabilities, one of the things that Westminster has sort of worked its way past over the decades is mid-level and heavy industrial type uses. And I think some of that gets somewhat encouraged by our development code inasmuch that it requires those types of uses to be pushed further away from residential, and we keep having more residential developments proposed. And other places in the world have experienced that, whether it be downtown in places like Boston or more rural places like Santa Fe, New Mexico. And what they've done is sort of broadened the baseline of what's considered light industrial and allowed some of those things that traditionally would be considered heavy industrial. So as an example, some of those office buildings that are on Westminster Boulevard north of 104 slash Church Ranch, those are classical office buildings. But biopharma, laboratory uses, I've seen some places in Boston have actually put flammable and combustible liquids processing facilities inside those kinds of buildings. They do it all within the span of the building and fire codes, perfectly safe, et cetera, et cetera. But from a planning and zoning perspective, it's simply not allowed. So I'm wondering if there's, in a lot of this adaptive reuse or use capabilities for various parts of the city, that we rethink that a bit. It seems we're, if traditional trends keep going with commercial and commercial development, retail development, we're heading for a lot of open buildings that'll get replaced by apartment complexes, and we'll start losing commercial tax base out of that.
So the comprehensive plan establishes the land uses in the city. One of the pushes from, with our new comprehensive plan from city council was they wanted to see employment development. And so this code, among other policies established by the comprehensive plan, we were running with that. Today, the city staff uses the retail commercial design standards when there's an office or industrial use. We're proposing to create true employment industrial districts so we can have provisions for these that we don't have now. Again, this is all based on policy established in the comprehensive plan.
Commissioner Peg.
You said that you got the impression that there was a push for more housing or a desire for more housing. Can you explain a little more where that came from?
Yeah, I think I used the word interest. And that's just because, just based on people who've contacted me, emails, phone calls, the more useful comments on the city's social media pages. We sense a lot of interest from housing. The inclusivity board is interested in housing. In fact, Rich is here tonight. I'm going to be going to them tomorrow night. There's a lot of interest on, in housing. It's, I think, the number one thing in the city's strategic plan, so we're hearing it from council, too.
Okay, thank you.
I guess with that, I'd like to maybe transition to the questionnaire we put out. If people would like to spend a few minutes putting in your thoughts, and then if you could provide those to us after the meeting, we can have them to look back on. And then there's so few of us here tonight, I think there's more than enough time for everyone to share their thoughts. But we had three things that we, we obviously realize these are general questions, but we thought that it'd be useful to work from those. So the first question, what is one characteristic of Westminster that should be respected with new development? And I'll give some examples. There's a lot of brick in Westminster. Westminster's always used brick. Maybe that's a characteristic that someone likes. Maybe it's our 150 miles of austere trails, and some of our developments have done a great job of tying into or even having their own trail systems. So when I say characteristic, that's kind of what I think. And then is there a development within Westminster or even outside Westminster that you like? You'd like to see something like that here, or you'd like to see new development here maybe be more like that, whatever project that is, residential, commercial, whatever type? And then is there something maybe you've seen in recent development that you don't like? You don't want to see a lot more of that. You know, we got some feedback from somebody, they don't like all the flat roofs on the newer multifamily buildings. They want to see pitch roofs. That's something that concerned that person. But really, this is up to you, however you want to respond to it. And we're eager to hear your feedback and put it to use.
Actually, did have one other question.
Yeah, we can go on to that.
In some of the packet information, it discussed HOAs and how the city interacts with those. It seems, one of the questions that was in there was, or one of the tasks that was being undertaken from the implementation plan is how to better work with developments that don't have an HOA or don't have one proposed. How do you perceive that's going to happen? Because it seems as if most, some of the requirements, anyway, for monuments, signs, dedicated open space, et cetera, actually encourage HOAs because how else would you pay for and care for those facilities?
Yeah. So in the attachments, you had the entire implementation plan for the comprehensive plan, and then only the stuff highlighted in yellow had to do with the unified development code. So the HOA is not part of this project. But I will tell you that the city staff is looking at, you know, if there's resources that we can assist HOAs. We did the Harris Park plan a few years ago, kind of as a pilot project for how could we help an area without an HOA, set a vision for the area. So probably something like that. I think I'd like to invite Rich and Karen maybe to speak first, and then we can come back to the commissioners. Either one of you. You don't have to use the podium unless you really want to. I'd like to keep it informal, but.
I've got pretty loud voices, so if you can't hear me, raise your hand and holler at me. My name is Rich Chamberlain. I am a member of the inclusivity board. And my main concern is really about issues of inclusivity. And so I'm really encouraged about what I've heard tonight from Elizabeth and Andrew. The idea that we want to encourage diversity in style and size and so on, and some of your thoughtful comments about affordability and a mix of houses. My concern is that the kind of monoculture that I live in in Kings Mill is dull. It's boring. I love southwestminster. You know, I love Harris Park because it's not like that. It's a vibrant community. You see that in Five Points, you see that in North Denver, and of course, that's a result of slower development and more incremental type development. And if we can duplicate that as given our situation, I think that makes for a more vibrant neighborhood than the one I live in. So anyway, just, I wanted to listen, and I wanted to learn something tonight because my ignorance of city planning and zoning is vast. And I really appreciate the opportunity. So thank you. I'm very encouraged by what I'm hearing tonight because you really addressed my concerns without my asking. So thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll see you tomorrow. Karen?
Yeah. As far as the questions, we, yeah, huge of mountains, open spaces, parks, those are the characteristics that I really think should be respected with any new development. And as far as, again, it's a housing development, I like Legacy Ridge. I know those houses are too big for what we need now, but there was respect for the land, there was respect for the contours, there was respect for the trees, the wetlands of that space. I know bulldozers were used, but they weren't used to the extent that like uplands is complete rape-of-the-land development, and I hate the uplands. I just hate it. I do think that, and it'll be coming online, I think Shannon Byrd, the state legislature, worked on, it's called Construction Defect Bill, that will allow more condominiums to be built. And I'd love to see more condominiums built in the new downtown, as well as, you know, like where there's office buildings planned. I personally don't know that we need a lot more office buildings, but if there can be like office buildings or live work or, you know, condos that encourage business in those buildings rather than just people living, but, you know, a lot of people working from home and that kind of thing. And if there were buildings devoted that had a space on the lower level or something where, you know, people could meet for business meetings and it was set up so that a lot of people living in those buildings actually were able to conduct business, you know, within their structure, and that's how the building was designed, I think that'd be great. I also, again, I'm just disgusted with the uplands. I just hate it. It's taking one of our last big spaces in Westminster and converting it to asphalt, concrete, and rooftops. And I would much rather see those living abilities in the new downtown and bring foot traffic to the downtown and the businesses by virtue of how people live there versus living in the uplands in these, you know, again, it's going to be a monoculture situation for sure, which I don't like either. I also want to bring up the fact that almost all the uplands plans have had exceptions to get them through. And from what I understand, in the city of Westminster's, the homes have to be built within three years after they're approved, or they go back to the drawing board. And I don't see how that's going to happen at uplands. And I'm glad, I hope they cannot build that stuff. But I would like to see that space converted to pollinator garden for monarch butterflies. We're talking about, you know, all those spaces that are lost for the pollinators and the monarchs, the population of the monarchs has gone down 99%. It's like, well, that's because we keep on building on everything or using pesticide and everything. I would much rather have land trades, the Westminster Farm do some land trades and be able to build up high. I have no problem with heights, you know, eight-story more in the new downtown, but that makes it kind of new downtown versus all this flat stuff at the uplands that just takes up space and it's nothing but concrete and asphalt land. I also think that we should be encouraging building with net-zero energy methods somewhere. Give special privileges to developers who are using heat pumps and solar and geothermal and all those net-zero energy strategies rather than continuing to promote our earth-warming, fossil fuel-driven energy stuff that happens with every development. I don't think there's any development here that's really net-zero energy. And I mean, we really need to be encouraging that, I think, at this point. So those are some of the, oh, and also a sense of beauty. I mean, I'm sorry, the new downtown is nothing but a bunch of boxes. Yeah, pitch crews help some beauty, some imagination. We've got to figure out some way to encourage beautiful architecture. I'd love to see Westminster have, you know, like, design competitions where people know that when you design in Westminster, it has to be beautiful, and there's competitions to ensure that beautiful architecture is built versus, I mean, I'm sorry, boxes, ugly boxes. It's just, architecture can be an art form. And we're, it's just boxes and lumber. So those are the things I'd like to see encouraged somewhere.
Thank you.
Chair, I'm not sure what, how do you like to do? Do you just want to go down the line with the commissioners, or what might be the easiest way for the commissioners?
Is this for questions or comments?
Oh, to share the questionnaire or something.
Oh, the questionnaire.
I don't know.
Okay, sure.
One end to the other, I'll let you.
Mix. So is everyone finished with their, okay? Mr. Tomacek, you're on.
As far as characteristics should be respected, I agree with the last speaker that open space view corridor is a pretty big thing. As we saw from the As we saw from the last development that was in front of us, a lot of the areas to be developed have very challenging land to be on that's necessarily going to impact the existing residents. I think helping people maintain their quality of life, it should be a pretty big deal. As far as places that are nearby that should be replicated, future development, a great Legacy Ridge is interesting in its, the multiple types of living that's there, a little bit of business tossed in, especially around the perimeter that develops separately. Understand that. But it was a nice mix in a place that really needed that kind of transition between super dense and not so spread and rather spread out. There's a place up in Longmont called Prospect Newtown. That's one of my favorite developments in Colorado. I grew up in East Baltimore where places are redeveloped all the time. We even have some stuff that was dates back to the 1950s, some of it all the way back to the 1930s, and they were all worker housing. So built row homes, single family houses that were all built exactly alike for miles and miles around. What Baltimore County did in the 1960s was basically threw some of the planning and development stuff out the window and said, it's your land, do whatever you want with it. So some of the houses, they popped a top on them, some of them they doubled them up, some of them they put garages on them. And so what looked like just blocks of military housing in the 1950s suddenly was a pretty vibrant little development. I think a lot of our, I know planning and zoning doesn't control what people do on their existing houses, but the things we encourage HOAs to do actually pushes away from that. The uniformity of housing, specific colors, all that kind of stuff gets in the way of that kind of unique development that we can't see anywhere else. As far as ones that I don't like, Bradburn Village, this is probably going to be a repetitive one right down the line. I don't mind new urbanist developments. I dislike them when they go too far. Bradburn Village was one that made a lot of optimistic assumptions that never came In kind of similar fashion, I don't know what the name of the development is as far as it go, or as far as what was in front of the planning department, but the one that's at Fenton and 91st Place, right behind the Bolero, just to the north of it, those sort of odd looking houses that are right off 92nd Avenue, just past Westminster Boulevard, just to the east of it.
North of the theater?
So two-story townhomes along 92nd downtown?
Yeah. That whole thing...
The downtown, the ones getting built now?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That whole thing just strikes me as really, really weird and completely out of place. I'm not sure I'd, given what I know happens on 92nd Avenue on a Thursday night, I'm not sure I'd want my front door being right out on it. Think there was, but I would like to see that not repeated, that kind of thing.
See what you get for letting me go first?
That's helpful. Thank you.
Commissioner Dunn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just very briefly, the characteristics of Westminster that I would like to see respected are the design standards, the recent design standards that we have for public buildings. I like the way that we require things like recessed windows and things of that nature. It's a good standard to go by for all the buildings that are going to be in use and, you know, by people every day going in and out. Anyway, I also would respect the open trail systems that we have that are supported by That was one of the, one of the aspects of Westminster that attracted me and my wife when we moved out of Denver back in 1998. And we use them as much as we can and we are happy to pay that, what is it, one tenth of one percent, something like that, every year for that. Finally, the old neighborhoods. I see a lot in like North Denver that some of the old neighborhoods have been broken up, as it were. It's, it can be a good thing, but it's not always. I mean, there are, there are places in neighborhoods that somebody will drop a house and put up a two-story, you know, Darth Vader looking kind of thing. And it's, and it can work sometimes, but other times not so much. So I would like to see care taken if, if, if that sort of thing were to happen here in Westminster. The development within Westminster nearby that I do like is Bradburn Village.
Sit way over here.
And I say that, I say that because I like their idea and I know that they were, I don't know if they, they were inspired by Prospect Newtown. I enjoy that, that neighborhood very much so. But I see that Bradburn probably doesn't have the same kind of diversity as Prospect does, but I give them an A for effort. As for any development that I don't like, I can't really come up with any, but I'll keep looking around.
Commissioner calling.
Thank you. So the characteristics I like about Westminster best are the open space and trails and connectivity. I mean, we ride our bikes a lot and I love to be able to stay off-road as much as possible. The on-street trails that are in Westminster are scary, so I avoid them. And it's nice that we've got such a great connected system. So any new development needs to really try to connect those pieces that we're missing. So that's important to me. And also the parks. We have such a good variety of parks and open space, natural open space, manicured, large parks, small parks, just all kinds. And I love that we have such a good variety and that they're linked by the trail systems. We have wonderful trails throughout Westminster. I just, I think that we're really lucky to have that and that's one of the features I like best about Westminster. Another thing is, you know, this is, I was hesitant to say this, but I do believe that some parts of the older Westminster have a little bit better four-sided architecture. Some of the new architecture I see get built, it's missing four-sided architecture. What I mean by that is a lot of the developers come in with a fourplex or a row of townhomes and they completely miss the opportunities on the end to have enhancements like windows that may be face out because it's their standard architecture and they don't put windows on the end because it's not part of their plan. Or wrapping the stone or the masonry or whatever the material is around a little bit better and not have such flat ends of buildings. They need to maybe have buildings that are one story on the ends and then step up. So if you have like a fourplex, maybe the units on the end are one story, ranches, and step up to two stories. Just a little bit more variety of four-sided architecture and making buildings look nice all the way around, even on the backsides, even when they don't open to back, open space. So that was one thing I'd like us to continue to respect. Particular developments, I love Legacy Ridge. I agree with you. Even, even the part of Legacy Ridge that's on the other side of Federal, people always forget about that part. It has patio homes, attached product over there. There's a lot of different densities. And I like, I like, I'm a little bit biased, but I like Legacy Ridge because it's very organic, organic, as opposed to everything new is very traditional, gridded streets with alley loaded everything. But it's a lot of organic streets. They really worked with the architect, with the landforms to work with the land and lay the golf course in there. And there's some amazing views throughout Legacy that I think they did a great job with. And the Highland Canal goes through there and there's a bike trail, which I love. So that's one of the developments I really like and the mix of housing types. And the last one, the things that I haven't liked that I've seen is some of the denser developments and Uplands is one of them. And I understand what they're doing. They're doing a mix of housing types and I know that they're doing a lot of open space and as a trade-off, they're doing denser developments. But I still feel like we're missing out on some things there and I voiced my opinion a couple of times. And I know parking is just one of my pet peeves because I think that guest parking is something that we underrate a lot. And I think that there's a lot of young people out there that live in dense developments. I have two sons and they both have this anxiety, I got to get home because I want to miss my parking space. And I hate that. And then what happens when you have a birthday party? Like I always say, where's grandma going to park to come to your birthday party? She's not going to park six blocks away. So I just don't, I don't think we have to have a massive amount of parking, but I just think that guest parking needs to be positioned throughout the development in places where it makes sense. And they tend to put it all in one spot. And so there's all these units over here that don't have any guest parking. So that kind of thing, I think we need to work on a little bit. I think that's all I'm going to say. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. I grew up in a small town in Montana and it was totally mixed use and it worked really well. We could walk to the grocery store. We could walk to the movie theaters. We could walk to all the commercial we needed. And I see some of that in South Westminster because that was developed organically, wasn't planned. And so they put grocery stores close by and they build the houses so that you can get there without having to fight traffic if you need to or bike. So I believe that those places reflect the fact that mixed use can coexist and in fact, it is preferable to large tracts of very similar homes. So I would say in the future, we need to seriously consider mixed used areas that allow people to get out of their cars and find other means of transportation to the services they need. The other thing I wanted to say that I like about Westminster is the bike trails and the walking trails and a lot of open space. That is one of the magical things about Westminster. Now I'm going to step into some area that's contention here. I actually think Bradburn is good for one thing, and that is the fact that you can walk to the retail. It misses badly on affordability and it is a monoculture, but unfortunately, at the time it was approved, that was what the market wanted. So I like Bradburn because it's small, walkable, close to services. I also want to say I like Uplands for the fact that it's got affordable homes and they are trying to preserve some of the view corridors and they are putting in green space for the residents. It is not perfect, but we need affordable homes and even some of those are not affordable by many standards, but they are closer to affordable and we're going to have lots of them there. And I wish we could have saved that tract of land forever, most beautiful place in Westminster, but it was privately owned and in this country, capitalism determines. So we had to hold the developer to the highest standard we could and get the best product we could. So for those two reasons, I like Uplands. It's also imperfect, but it's closer. The things I do not like or would like to see removed from most of the next band of developments is large lawns. I think we've got a water crisis in our future and lawns, in fact, we should probably incentivize people to get rid of their lawns if we can. And I know many HOAs don't allow that, but I think we're going to have to figure out some way to incentivize people to stop using so much water. We don't want to get rid of the large athletic fields and parks. Those should be given some kind of an exemption because many people use those and they're critical to the, to the quality of life for many of the people. I guess I mentioned earlier that I don't like large homes. They just take a lot of city services and are expensive. Residential does not pay for itself and that's why a mixed use is a great way to kind of blend something that does pay for itself, brings in tax revenue with parts of the city that do not. So I think one of our speakers today mentioned that it's kind of like a monoculture, very, what's the word, not, not a lot of interest goes on in these large tracts of homes. So those are the two things I would like to see less of, large homes and large lawns. Thank you.
Well, I think my comments are going to be all over the place. So anyhow, the, so, kind of like Jim, I grew up in a small town. I grew up actually in the country, my small town of 900 people in Ohio. And yeah, in town it was walkable. We didn't have a movie theater. We had a grocery store and a library and stuff. Out in the country, obviously, it was, it was not walkable. I mean, well, not really. You drove or you rode your bike or whatever and could get around. But, you know, and that's, but I say that because, you know, and this is more of, this is more a feeling, but I like our hometown feel in Westminster. You know, we're a small town feel in a big city in many respects, you know? So the parks and open space, that was, and trail connections and community spaces, that's really the characteristic of Westminster I believe I like best. And I entirely disagree with Jim that the farm is the best view in Westminster. The best view in Westminster is the top Westminster Hills Open Space Dog Park. When you get up to the hill and you can see the mountains and you can see over Stanley Lake to Denver and everything, that's the best view in Denver, or in Westminster, I mean. So in my, so I will, I'll die on that hill, literally.
You might.
And I might. Anyhow, but, and, you know, the, another thing, I think Tracy mentioned the parking and I think that ample parking is very important, you know, the, because, you know, if, as we move forward to the particular developments, you know, I also like Bradburn, at least the theory of Bradburn, you know, maybe not the implementation as much, but I like the theory because it is kind of a walkable neighborhood and stuff like that. You know, I, I do like those little pocket neighborhoods, say in north, well, like the Tennyson neighborhood in Denver, say, or the, you know, I was just at Logan and Almeida Fire on the Mountain and with my dad and he was, and from out of town, he goes, wow, just look at all these people walking by. And it's all single, almost all single family homes around there. But it's vibrant down there, even though it's not, it's vibrant but not dense, at least not in the immediate area. Now Wash Park nearby is probably not bringing some people over there, but still it's, I do like that. So I like the idea of Bradburn. I like the, you know, and I like the idea of what historic Westminster can be. I don't know that it's as vibrant as, as Rich said out there. I, you know, I go, every Saturday I'm down at Erica's Suites of Inspiration and so having burritos and some, sometimes it's hopping and people are coming in for hours and sometimes I'm the only person in the restaurant for hours or, or an hour or two. It's, it, so it varies. I would like to see that more vibrant, but I think that is an opportunity for the vibrancy. You know, but, and I'm, but I'm talking about places I like to visit. I, you know, I also like the new downtown. I think we've got, I think we're at the tipping point and I think some of this new activation and the new activities there, we're finally getting to that point where it's going to be great. But, you know, and again, the parking, because we can get downtown and we can park and we can, then we can walk around, you know? But for living, I honestly, maybe I'm a boring person, but I like countryside. I'm going to, I'm going to, you know, yeah... I'm gonna, I'm gonna, you know, yeah, as our architecture boring, yes. Our streets roundabout and stuff, but I think they did a good job of following the drainage ways and using the contours of the land and having parks in the middle of it. And, you know, and the roads are wide and, yeah, not all of them have bike lanes, but yet kids still play in the road in the cul-de-sacs and on the streets and we don't have a huge traffic issue in there. I think, I think there's just a lot of, a lot of, it's a neighborly place and that, you know, while I enjoy visiting those, I don't know if I would want to live in, I agree, I don't know if I, I love those townhomes that were mentioned along 92nd, but I don't think I would want to live with my back to 92nd either. You know, that's, that's kind of it there. And then as far as a feature of recent development, you know, this is one of my bugaboos, I guess the road, you know, some of these road diets and redesign of our current roads. I think there's a way to be done to make roads safer and I think there's opportunities for that. But I think my case on 92nd on the south side, right in front of those townhomes, was one of the dumbest things we've ever done as a city. And it's, you know, taking away, you know, not only a travel lane or, which turned into the exit lane or through there, you know, where we had lane parity, now we don't have lane parity. You've gone down to two lanes and then adding a turn lane every, every there. I think we could have, I think we could have done that a little more smartly and I think it's just ugly as heck going past Eaton Street and then having it flare back out to the three-lane section when we could have just kept that third lane in there because I think the traffic needed it. You know, maybe, maybe someone had a traffic study as, as we were talking about in the pre-meeting that, that said, "Well, we don't." But I think that that's, I think it was just, I think it's just ugly and poorly implemented. So I think we have to be, I think we have to be smart about the road diets. We, and I, I think there's places where we need the traffic calming, like Independence and all that. But I, you know, in these new developments, let's, let's be smart before we just willy-nilly take away traffic lanes and stuff like that. Let's look at, you know, and, but we still need our bike connections and everything else that we talked about. So anyhow, those are my, those are my comments.
Note that we're about out of time, so I'll stay brief and just mirroring the comments about the interconnectivity of trails and public spaces and parks was a characteristic that I like, including access to public transportation, although I think we need to push RTD on fulfilling its promise from 1993 for fast transit, but that's a topic for another day. I, particular development within Westminster, this is anachronistic and maybe similar to other comments, I really like the smaller, like Lowell and 72nd neighborhoods, which is similar to what Berkeley on Tennyson used to be, but now has expanded. We're past that. I mean, I live in Westbrook, it's, you know, typical subdivision, suburban subdivision with a lot of homes and then god-awful massive commercial at the intersection of Wadsworth and 100th that is a blight, but it is what it is and we're not going to change that. But if we can encourage more kind of small community-type neighborhoods like that, that'd be great, I think. I can't afford to live in one in the Denver area anymore. Berkeley and Lowell and, you know, all of those are priced out of anybody who works for a living. And finally, what I don't like, boxes. I appreciate the concern about boxes, boxes on boxes and next to boxes. It looks like cargo containers stacked around each other in a lot of places, but that's a matter of personal aesthetics, most, more than anything else frankly. And if people build them and people buy them, that's what the market wants, that's what will happen. And if you look at the Ballpark neighborhood, look at Rhino, look at a lot of the homes being built in the small neighborhoods like Navajo Street, they're all massive 6,000-square-foot cargo boxes. So that's it.
So the one thing that I like about Westminster is that a lot of neighborhoods do have good bike and pedestrian access to regional trail systems. And I have noticed that that seems to be improving and I would like to see that continue to Particular development that I like in Westminster is, sorry Dave, Bradburn. It's not the kind of mixed-use that like, you know, that I really enjoy, but it does have a nice pedestrian experience. Just walking around there is really nice. And I would say my favorite thing in the area is Tennyson Street between 38th and 46th. I think, Jim, you pointed out, there is always something going on. Was it Jim or David? There's always something going on down there and there's always people down there. It's great, it's fun. I always look in a new window and see something I haven't seen before when I'm there. And other people have mentioned that living close to things like that is expensive because we're not allowed to build things like that. They are desirable and rare and so they are expensive. I'm optimistic that we can make them less rare. And then is there an aspect of recent development that I don't like? Streets are really wide and often don't have bike infrastructure and that encourages high speeds and it's a bummer. And it makes the pedestrian experience a bummer. Everything looks like a strip mall with a giant parking lot. I don't think that applies as much to more recent development, but, you know, there's development potential there. It's a shame that land gets used for ugly buildings. It's a bigger shame that it doesn't get used at all when it sits as a half-empty parking lot. So, you know, sure, some of these townhomes that back up to streets, I wouldn't want to live there, but someone does. And someone thinks they can build it and sell it and I don't understand why I should prevent that transaction. And I think that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. It is getting close to time, but I will allow short comments if anyone has one.
Oh, I just wanted to say, you know, we're both taking notes here. This is, this is really helpful as well as Rich and Karen, of course. This is, this is really great and, you know, we can keep having these conversations over the next few months. So, yeah, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you for a very good presentation. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting at 8:02 PM. Thanks, everyone.
Commissioners, if I could just remind you all to leave your lanyards and your name tags at your seats, please. It's not directed at anyone in particular, Jim.